Oh, Paul's got, he's got the doorbell tonight?
Okay, good evening. This is the Wednesday, February 5th, 2020 regular town council meeting for the town of Scarborough. Item number one is me calling this to order, so there it is. Item number two is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, excuse me, item number three is roll call.
Councilor Clutcher?
Here.
Councilor Hayes?
Here.
Councilor Glyssine?
Here.
Councilor Katerina?
Here.
Councilor Johnson?
Here.
Councilor Hamel?
Here.
Chairman Johnson?
Here. Item number four is order number 20015, an act on the request for an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRS A 4056A regarding a personnel matter relating to the town manager's evaluation. And do I have a motion?
So.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Great. We will adjourn and we will be back promptly at 7:00 PM.
Sir.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, the, this council meeting actually began at 6:00 PM, so we are going to jump right into item number four. Item number four is general public comments for anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to anything that's not on the Item number five is approval of the January 8, 2020 regular town council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to commend Tony for a great job pulling together minutes from last meeting. It was no easy task. We had a lot of amendments.
That's true, yes. Anymore? All those in favor? Great. Item number seven is items to be signed to treasurer's warrants. I will do that after the meeting. Item number eight is non-action item. We have one non-action item tonight. It's an update from Project Grace on the fuel fund.
Good evening, councilors, thank, and manager Tom, staff, guests. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you briefly tonight. My name is Steffi Cox. I'm the executive director of Project Grace, and on behalf of our board of directors, wanted to give you an update on the fuel fund. With a messy winter storm coming up, we know that no matter what Punxsutawney Phil says, it's gonna be a while before we see a warm spring. So the other thing we can say with certainty is that Scarborough knows how to come together for common cause. We know how to extend a helping hand, and we show up when it really counts. Our town's eighth annual Keeping Our Neighbors Warm Fuel Rally is this coming Saturday at the Oak Hill Firehouse, and this is just one of those occasions when we all show up. The fire, police, community services, and the library all pitch in to help Project Grace host this event. The clerk's office gives out clink bags, and the Lions, Kiwanis Rotary, and other groups doing good all year round are with us on Saturday morning as well. From 10:00 to noon, there are activities, bake sale, raffle, safety demos, a number of things like that, and an uplifting performance by the State Street Jazz Band as well, and we hope everybody will come out. For those who may be hearing about Project Grace for the first time, we're a neighbor helping neighbor group here in town. We've been helping with all sorts of needs for about 20 years now, and our partnership with the town on many initiatives includes the hugely successful Community Thanksgiving Dinner, the school lunches and school backpacks, and summer camps, diapers, to name just a few of the ways we work together to help our neighbors. In a typical winter, Project Grace helps with fuel assistance for about 65 households here in town, and even with generous discounts from friends like Conroy's, we can easily see our fuel bill climb up to about $20,000 a year, even more than that sometimes. Local philanthropist Eddie Woodin has helped establish the fuel fund in 2008, and over the years, together, we've raised $150,000 for fuel assistance for our neighbors. That is an impressive amount of money when you think about the donations come in, clink bags, they come in five or $10 raffle amounts, modest checks from people in all neighborhoods, and grants as well from small family foundations. About half of that $150,000 comes in during the rallies, and so Saturday is an incredibly important day for us and for your neighbors, and we hope you'll help us get the word out about that. And I'd like to remind everybody that it really doesn't matter how low the temperatures go, or what the price of oil or a quart of firewood is. We have a lot of neighbors who struggle every week, every month, to pay their bills, to put food on the table, to pay for medicines, the rent, and few of them have, um, have all that they need to, to pay their bills and take care of their families. Not too long ago, a senior told me that, he said, "Honey, I cheated the thermostat. I put it up to 58." Fifty-eight. That's cold. So, we have folks from all walks of life, put up a map of town and put pins in it on all the neighborhoods for who's giving and who's receiving. Every neighborhood has givers and receivers, and sometimes those receiving also give back, and any one of us can find ourselves in a hard spot. So, the fuel fund is incredibly important to the well-being of our neighbors. It is thanks to the partnership of the police, the fire, the library, and all of you that we can respond when the calls come in, and believe me, it is a difficult call to make to ask for help. And we're grateful to be able to, to thank the town for its support for the fuel fund, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
No?
Okay.
Great.
We'll see you Saturday. Thanks very much.
Okay, order number 20007, a 7:00 PM public hearing on the authorization of a credit enhancement agreement for WEX and the authorization of a delegation to the town manager to execute such agreement in substanti- in substantially the form as presented to the town council. Before we hold the public hearing, two things are gonna happen. I'll give a quick update of the timeline on how we got here, and then we're gonna have town attorney Shawna Cook Mueller is going to come up and give us a quick presentation about the agreement itself. The town councilors are gonna ask her some clarifying questions if we see it necessary, and then we'll begin public comment. So with that, I will roll right into this timeline. You'll have to excuse me, I can't, I can't, almost can't see that far, so if I'm squinting, I apologize. July of last year, WEX sent out a request for proposal for the local area. Many developers answered that request. Part of Ben Devine's LLC's request included a letter from the town. In the letter of the town, addressed about, I, there was somewhere along the lines of 20 criteria of what makes Scarborough impressive. In that request of proposal, they did ask specifically to see if there was opportunity for tax breaks. That was in the original request for proposal. September of last year, WEX seeks more information and clarification from all applicants, so at this point, I believe the pool was somewhere around a dozen towns that were in the running. September 6, WEX representatives and consultant meets with Peter Hayes, Katie Foley, Tom Hall, and Karen Martin. That was last, last year's council chair and last year's council vice chair. On November 18th, WEX, yep, I am reading that correctly, November 18th, WEX requests a meeting with Tom Hall and Karen Martin, and the sites are then narrowed down to the Downs and South Portland. November 19th, Tom Hall meets with WEX representatives at headquarters in Portland. December 4th, council executive session to consider negotiating a CEA directly with WEX. I'll take a quick second and deviate from the timeline to give somebody, people background of the December 4th meeting. The purpose of the December 4th executive session, from me, the chair, was essentially to see if there was a temperature yes or no, if we were willing to entertain a credit enhancement agreement. On December 18th, there was a council executive session to consider the CEA with WEX. So coming out of the 4th, two weeks prior, there was at least enough temperature for us to discuss if the council was willing to consider a CEA agreement. Coming out of the December 18th meeting, we did offer WEX our initial deal, which included a 0% CEA on the current project and a incentive for expansion of future projects. WEX does currently have a letter of intent to expand beyond what we're actually talking about, and our first offer to WEX was no CEA on the current building, additional, a CEA of some sort on expansions if they were to happen. That offer was soundly rejected by WEX. On December 20th, council chairman myself, vice chair Don Hamel, town manager in Center Street Partnerships, which include Ben Devine and Rocky Risvera, we met up at WEX headquarters. At that meeting, there was a comparison between us and South Portland. The package that we had offered, that was rejected, was not considered. South Portland's package was roughly $320,000 more incentive than what Scarborough was offering. As a result of that meeting, council chairman myself, Don Hamel, brought back to the council to decide if we were willing to entertain approximately meeting them halfway. So that is where the $150,000 number is coming from per year. That was, somebody can correct me if they disagree, but the rationale was meeting halfway between Scarborough's incentive package and South Portland's incentive package. On January 8th, council executive session to further consider WEX CEA, guidance provided to the manager on a proposal to WEX pending public review and council approval. That's the exact date that this, that this agreement we're talking about today that is published in the agenda packet, that's where this was formed. And then on the 17th, we drafted the CEA. We have already had on the 22nd, we had a public workshop and the first reading. That brings us to today, which is February 5th, we have a public hearing, and February 19th is expected to be a second reading. There is one more date that I would like to state. February 13th at 6:00 PM in council chambers is a community roundtable about this specific deal and WEX coming to town. It does not have a set agenda, it will not be structured, it's in the sense of come and talk to some elected officials and some staff to learn more about this deal. So that brings us to where we are now, that is the timeline. I can confidently say there's not a whole lot that you don't know in the audience at this point, that we know as councilors as far as the deal and the chronology, the chronol-?
Chronology.
Chronology of the deal. Thank you. With that, Shawna, you wanna take it away?
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, council. My name is Shawna Cook Mueller for the record. I'm an attorney at Bernstein Sher, and I represent the town of Scarborough on tax increment financing matters, and I just wanna begin by making sure everybody remembers and recalls that a year ago, approximately, the town of Scarborough designated the Scarborough Downtown Omnibus TIF District, which is a TIF district of over 900 acres that encompasses both the Scarborough Downs property, as well as other property in the community in the center of town. The way that this TIF district was structured is that 3% of the incremental taxes during the term of this district are set aside for municipal economic development projects that were outlined in the development program that the council adopted last year. And then in addition to that, the council already previously authorized the execution of a credit enhancement agreement with Crossroads Holdings LLC, Scarborough Downs developer, that addresses an additional incremental tax agreement on just the Scarborough Downs property. So, and, and for those of you, I can get into the details of that on another date, but for the, the first 10 years of that agreement, Scarborough Downs or the, the Crossroads Holdings LLC is entitled to a 40% of incremental tax revenues on that property payment from the, from the town. At 10 years, there is a potential for that percentage to go down, and it may stay at 40%, depending on certain performance metrics, and then again, there's a check-in on performance metrics at year 20. So that's just the setting of the stage. Now, here we are, we're, tonight's discussion is about a proposed CEA credit enhancement agreement with WEX. At the time the district was approved, the town was authorized to enter into future credit enhancement agreements following a public hearing, that's the, tonight's public hearing, and the way that this TIF district is structured, it only covers the 17 acres that is the planned site for the WEX building, and to the extent after 3%, which is set aside for municipal TIF projects, and after 40%, or whatever future lesser percentage may apply under the Crossroads Holdings CEA, then an additional amount will be captured in incremental taxes, and a payment to WEX will be made of $150,000 per year for 15 years. This will start following the tax year in which a certificate of occupancy is issued for the WEX project, and that is the summary of the proposal. I'm very happy to take any questions or elaborate. Thank you.
Anybody having clarifying questions on the council? Councilor Clutchy?
So, so let's say the building's appraised at 25 million, and there isn't enough, enough tax revenue to do the 3%, the 40%, and the $150,000. Do we still owe them $150,000?
No. The contract is drafted so that the 3% needs to be set aside for the municipal project cost account, and then the 40%, or whatever applies under the Crossroads Holdings CEA, and then to the extent there is available incremental taxes in addition to that, they would receive that in a payment if it's less than $150,000. If it is more than $150,000, $150,000 is the payment amount for each year for the 15-year term. Thanks.
Anymore? Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, just, just a quick question. As this, as this has sort of unfolded, there's been already some public conversations with the other parties that are involved, and some verbal representations have been made around, you know, part of it, we met halfway, the $150,000, the developers were gonna meet us the other halfway, the other 150. If representations have been made verbally, do we, is there an accountability, a due diligence, a fiduciary responsibility that it's up to the council to make sure some of those things are documented? If, if, if those representations are made and they're not followed through, does that create some liability for the town on the behalf of the taxpayers that we made decisions based on representations, but we have no documentation to support it?
So I think you're talking about representations that were made about the private deal between the developer and WEX?
That, and there was representations made about covering traffic impact, all the traffic impact that would be caused by the development.
Um, you know, I think to the extent that the council wants to ask for some additional information and confirmations, the council's free to do that. The way the credit enhancement agreement is drafted, there are particular obligations that I have described, and we are protecting ourselves to ensure we don't obligate us to, to pay something that we don't have, but there isn't any obligation in the credit enhancement agreement to ask for confirmations about the private deal.
No, but I guess my, my bigger question was, do we have any accountability, responsibility to taxpayers that we have made verbal representations to things if those aren't, if we haven't done due diligence to make sure that those are in fact in place? Is there any recourse for taxpayers to say that somehow we didn't do what we were supposed to do for our fiduciary responsibility?
I don't believe there is a legal obligation there. You know, what you may be talking about is, you know, voters' ability to decide that it wasn't the right choice in retrospect, or it was the right choice, and then they have the ability, of course, when they go to the polls, but, but the council has delegated the authority, or is vested with the authority, to decide whether this particular credit enhancement agreement is the right deal for the town based on the information you have and you've asked for at that time, and so I think that's where I would come out on that.
Thank you.
Councilor Glassing?
So just a quick follow-up on that. So I think you're saying that we have the right to see the information, but we don't have to see the information, but we have the right to see it, but there's not gonna be a legal, legal problem if we don't see the representations that have been made, like the developer saying they're splitting the difference with us and things like that.
Um, yeah, so, so I mean, the council has the, and the town, in this negotiation, has had the ability to ask for whatever you would need in order to feel comfortable that this is a deal. So that's sort of what I was, what I was intending to say.
Okay, that, yeah, great. So I, so my question, I might have a follow-up on it depending on your answer, was, so the way I understand this, and I think you've described it well, so the, the, the underlying deal, which is kind of pinned on this, there's the, let's call it the off- which is kind of pinned on this, there's the, let's call it the office complex, is going to generate a certain value, and then it's going to generate a certain tax bill. And the Downs is going to get 40% back based on their underlying deal. And so my understanding is that that amount that they give back will not be discounted by the WEX 150K. So I guess my question was, when, in their deal, I think it's pretty clear that if the town doesn't receive taxes, so let's say if Maine Health put a building in there, and they're exempt by state law, like the Downs doesn't get 40% of, you know, a reduced tax property, I mean, of a no-tax property. So since we're not going to have access to that 150K, if this deal goes through, we're going to give it to WEX, what would it take to say that we're going to reduce, you know, the amount that the underlying agreement gets by the 150K? I mean, is that, you'd have to change the underlying agreement, or how would that work?
Yeah, so I think you understand correctly how the two agreements work together, which is, there is already a current obligation to make that 40% payment. And then if there is additional increment available, which we projected there certainly will be, another $150,000 per year will be owed. To the extent the town wanted to try to, you know, sort of take that $150,000 out of the 40%, we would have had to renegotiate an existing contract, you know, that the town has already entered into. So, and that has not been done.
Anymore? Shawna, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I did have one more, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So on the TIF, the 3%, that the document for the state, it spelled out pretty clearly what we could spend the 3% on, and basically it's roads and economic development planning and the SEDCO and some things like that. Is it ever, does anyone ever pay the additional CEAs out of that money? Is that ever done? Or, I mean, clearly we'd take an amendment to the state to say that we wanted to do that, to pay the CEA out of that 3%, but is that ever done, or is that just something that's never done?
Well, certainly, TIF districts are amended all the time. So it's certainly possible for the town at some point to say, you know, we don't want to use this 3%, the way we originally thought we would, and you go back in and you do an amendment, and then you have that amendment approved through the state. What we're doing tonight is part of a process related to the omnibus status of the district, which provided that the town council has the authority to enter into credit enhancement agreements and effectively increase that capture percentage without having to do a full amendment process through DECD. But you certainly could in the future.
Okay. And there is something that will have to be submitted to the state, right, by WEX to say how many employees they expect to expand by because they're moving from one town to another, so it was like a clause G or something. I mean, we have the right to do it, but there's something we have to tell the state that we're giving the CEA to WEX, is that right?
Yes, we are required to submit any executed credit enhancement agreements to the state along with what is a form of DECD that's called a jobs goals form, and just some identification information about the developer or the company that's receiving the credit enhancement agreement. So we'll do that. We don't expect any response from DECD, but they put that in their records.
Because the agreement's already approved.
Correct.
Right, thank you.
Anymore? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, remember? We're not, no, not for the lawyer, no. But with that, we are opening up public comment, so if you guys would like to line up and anybody like to speak to, this is the public hearing on the WEX CEA right now. So we are, if you're here to speak to this, then now's the chance.
Good evening. My name's Art Dillon, 180 Blackpoint Road. My feelings, as well as those that I'm about to read, if I can pack up here. I'm representing the Scarborough Community Chamber of Commerce as their past president. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. In our recent board meeting in late January, our board of directors have voted in favor of supporting this CEA in favor of the WEX development. With this proposal, there's no initial cost to the town. For a proposed $45 million taxable piece of property, the return on investment of $150,000 CEA for 15 years just makes sense. To have a Fortune, an international Fortune 1000 company founded here in Maine would be in any community's, a feather in any community's cap. But more than that, WEX has multiple communities, or had multiple communities vying for this position, or for this development, and they've chosen Scarborough and the Downs as their ideal location. They want to invest in this particular project, and they have future expansion in their mind as well. But they also want to invest in our communities. This would also help balance the tax base, which we've heard a lot about. This will also bring additional development in the surrounding areas, inside and outside the Downs property, potentially shifting from residential to commercial development. The WEX development will also initiate further pursuit of alternate transportation options, such as buses, trains, and car pools in and through Scarborough sooner rather than later. This will benefit many commuters, not just in Scarborough. The town, Town Council, Scarborough Economic Development Corporation have done an exceptional job vetting and negotiating this proposal. This is a win-win, and we should not be, and it should not be missed. This isn't just for the good of WEX, this is the good for our town. On behalf of our membership, board, and business community at large, we hope the town council will consider this to agree, to agreeing to this proposal, so that we can seize this extraordinary opportunity. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Krasnick. My address is 12 Evergreen Farms Road. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Board of the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation, which I currently serve as Vice Chair. SEDCO's mission is to develop, support, and promote actions that lead to a healthy, diverse, and resilient local economy. And with that in mind, the SEDCO Board welcomes the decision by WEX to locate a 200,000-square-foot building, as well as up to 1,200 employees in Scarborough. SEDCO has submitted a letter to the council in support of the project, as well as the proposed credit enhancement agreement, but I just wanted to touch on a few of the points outlined in the letter. The WEX project is proposed within a designated growth area as defined by the 2006 Comprehensive Plan, as well as the draft Comprehensive Plan update. And the area is zoned for projects of this scale. The building will be within walking distance of both new and planned residential developments, providing opportunities for employees to both live and work in Scarborough. The project will create demand for existing businesses throughout Oak Hill, as well as future demand for office, retail, and services in the new Main Street area of the Downs, as well as on Haggis Parkway. A 200,000-square-foot building with a potential value of up to, say, $45 million is a rare level of investment in Maine today. WEX also provides an impressive set of employee benefits, invest heavily in their host communities, will provide a reason for young graduates to stay in Maine, and specifically Scarborough, and will continue to invest in Scarborough as they grow, having retained options on two additional parcels within the Downs. In addition, the proposed project fulfills the vision outlined in the comprehensive plans, creates a strong revenue stream from the estimated property taxes, will attract additional investments to the area, and improves the ratio of non-residential to residential development for property tax revenue. So in closing, from an economic development viewpoint, the SEDCO Board is very supportive of the project and the credit enhancement agreement. We believe that this is a very exciting opportunity for the town to partner with a very important and growing company in the state that has chosen Scarborough to be part of its home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Leanne Casloneus, Levin Orchard Street, and I'm here in favor of WEX. You've heard a couple times already that we are a Fortune 500 company, growing year over year. Huge news, given the news today about other companies starting to reduce their staff. And out of full disclosure, I'm a long-term WEX employee, so I can speak with a little confidence on what we do do. In 2019, WEX contributed over $1 million in philanthropic dollars to the communities. 90% of those dollars stayed here in Southern Maine, benefiting 150 nonprofit organizations. They touched us. They touched us a lot. Our employees, we logged 4,300 volunteer hours. Out of the volunteer time granted, the company gives us 16 hours, and 4,300 hours were logged by employees. I can say that that didn't include all of my time here in Scarborough. But we have a long understanding of what it takes to be part of a community, we're responsive to the community, and we give back to where we're located. With a particular focus on STEM, WEX supports educational initiatives and organizations that will help Maine build a strong pipeline of talent. Through nonprofit partners, we offer STEM-based programming such as Codex, bringing middle schoolers into WEX to learn the basics of coding. We're doing that with partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Southern Maine. Again, Scarborough students get to take part of this. They're learning how to code at an early age, inspiring them to go on to further education. We support statewide organizations such as Junior Achievement and Educate Maine, again, working directly with local schools to offer quality programs for all Maine students, again, including Scarborough students. What is WEX going to bring to Scarborough? Even after the CEA, they will be the sixth-largest taxpayer in town. They will be a lead tenant enticing other businesses to launch in the Downs and on Haggis Parkway with an estimated valuation of over $160 million. Again, a benefit to Scarborough. It's a growing company. They have their eye on future expansions, we've heard, that's going to generate even more tax revenue for the town. And specifically to our schools. The $227,000 in tax payment represents three full-time teaching positions, six full-time educational technicians, and 17% of our athletic budget. This is the first step in reducing the homeowner's burden of shouldering 77% of revenue generated in Scarborough, especially as we know on the horizon, we have major initiatives coming to town. This is the right move for Scarborough, it is going to rebalance us, and it's a win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Freeman. I live on Sterlingwood Drive in Scarborough. Sterlingwood Drive, that's right west of the intersection of Holmes Road and Broad Turn. It's a big commuter road. I watch everyone from Buxton and Standish come by my house every morning. Hopefully, they stop in Scarborough, and hopefully if we get WEX, they will definitely stop in Scarborough. I've worked in the construction industry for 30 years. I am a board member of SEDCO. I was on the losing proposal for WEX, when it was known as Wright Express. And if anyone works in the construction industry, they get a gas card from Wright Express. But I was on the losing end of a proposal in 1999 that led to the headquarters going to South Portland. I was working for Alliance Construction on Pleasant Hill Road. It was proposed to go on Payne Road, kind of like right behind where Extended Stay America is. And it ended up being built at 225 Gorham Road. And we started on the SEDCO Board hearing about the new WEX headquarters and the RFP back in around 2015, 2016, the one that ended up going to Portland and is now open. In my career in 2010, I looked at the data center on Darling Avenue for WEX. They were looking to do some renovations. And at the time, I, our design partner, the ID group out of Boston, said, "Yeah, we'll look at this." And he said, "Because we know there's going to be a bigger one down the road." And I got a feeling that there might be something in that 200,000-square-foot office building that's being proposed for the Downs. I also wanted to make note of, as things were said about what WEX has done in the community, I had the good fortune to serve on a committee with Mike Dubjak at USM, when Mike Dubjak was the Chairman of WEX. And talk about giving back to the community, he gave a million-dollar grant that started the digital science and innovation lab at USM, which is now up and running. And it's kind of an outgrowth of the Educate Maine program, which was another big give-back to build the workforce of the future. And it's my opinion that the workforce of the future is what's being eyed for this project. So I mentioned all that background information, because I think it's, I think it's just important as you, as you make your decisions to support this project or not. I hope you do support it, and I really ask you to give it your all to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. April Seither, 14 Huntley Drive. I'm also here to speak in favor of the WEX CEA. Admittedly, it took me longer to arrive at my position on this than my husband, who spoke in favor last week. He has been really helping me to kind of find my way through all the noise in this over the past week or so. And there are a number of compelling arguments being made on both sides of this issue. At the end of the day, there are always going to be hypothetical scenarios that can influence our decisions. Perhaps we can walk away on the deal and WEX will still come. Perhaps without WEX, the Downs developers will apply for more residential units. Perhaps WEX will spur commercial growth for our town. Perhaps WEX will bring traffic to a complete standstill. All of these potential pros and cons have their merit, but they are also hypotheticals. I'm asking town council to make their decision not based on a laundry list of hypotheticals, which, as human nature dictate, we tend to pick and choose the hypotheticals that fit our predetermined answer. So if you know you're a no, it's easy to latch on to those hypothetical situations that fit your own internal narrative. And so what I'm asking town council to do is drown out the noise and to look at the deal in front of you, because without weighing all of the hypotheticals based on their merit, there's no other way to selectively pick and choose which of these hypotheticals you are or are not going to put weight in. At the bottom, the bottom line is that it's being reported that this deal will bring in an average of $200,000 after cost to serve for the next 15 years. That's teacher salaries, that's first responders, that's maybe even a little bit of extra change in the taxpayers' pockets. So I'm asking for the town council to please consider the WEX CEA, and I look forward to arguing with you for the next several years about how we spend that money.
Good evening. Carol Goutro, 27 Jamco Mill Road in Scarborough. I too have been wrestling with the yea or nee on the program. I have a couple of questions. Relative to the $40,000, I'm sorry, 40% return to the developer on this particular property, if we add that to the $150,000 per year, what is that total number per year?
It will vary. Over time.
Average? Well, first year? Where I'm going with this, where I'm going with it is, is the 40% has to stay very visible, and for us to make a decision, that 40% And for us to make a decision, that 40%, that's going back to the developer, added to the $150,000 annually is a significant amount of money. And I'm asking the TEC to look at the bottom line in terms of generating revenue. How many dollars will end up coming back to the taxpayer? If that goes negative, I would have to say no. And so to that, I would like to see a number, a total number of the $150,000 plus the 40% going back to the developer. And as time passes, or let's say WEX doesn't take the property, does the deal on that property go away for anybody else coming in and we start fresh? And as that significant number that I was talking about, the 40% plus the 150, as years go on, there's more money going back to the developer. Now, I don't want the word developer to sound like a nasty number or name. But if we are to cut the best deal for the taxpayer, we have to take a look at the number of dollars of that total package, the 40% and the $150,000, and we should make room for negotiations with the developer, because that is going to be a very large number. And that's a direct loss to myself and every taxpayer in the room here. So for us to do diligence on this project, we need to look at the total cost, and I would like to see the number that falls out after all expenses on an annual basis on this program in the Downs.
It's approximately $200,000, but I will, a year after all cost to serve and after everything you just cited. But I'll have, I think Karen is teeing something up for you as well.
Yeah.
And I'll email you any, I'll email a spreadsheet for you, too. Absolutely.
Okay. So, I mean, that's close.
Yep.
And the bottom line is, it needs to be treated so that the taxpayer ends up with a plus at the bottom of the line, for sure. Okay? And also, as new developments or opportunities come into town, and I'm running them over my three minutes, I guess, I think everybody should be treated on the same fair process and formula. I think there should be a qualification for any company, whether it's a WEX or a guy bringing in a fill-in station. Everybody should be treated the same because before too long, there are going to be businesses coming in and say, "Hey, how about me?" So-and-so got such-and-such. Okay? I think we have to make that scenario go away. For us to do our job going forward as a town, and we're going to be here for the next hundred or so years, I hope we put a process, step-by-step process for qualifying a potential, okay? And a formula that will show the bottom line that the taxpayer can look at and say, "Okay, we should get a benefit here. Maybe our taxes aren't going to go up 3% this year. Maybe they're going to go up 1% and 1/2." So that's my message. And at this point, I can't say yea or nay because I'm not too sure how this is all going to shake out until we, as a town, have a process for qualifying people.
Thank you. Are there any others?
Good evening. Dennis Meehan, 28 Jamcom Mill Road, speaking after my neighbor. I'm also the current volunteer president of the Scarborough Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to come tonight and thank you, the council, and the reason being for your diligence on this process and recognizing what a special opportunity a company like WEX is. We've heard the accolades of a growing company from Maine and what they bring, and the opportunity to put them as kind of the staple tenant in a project like this is going to spur lots of other development. Lots of other development that if WEX doesn't take this property, might be split up into one, two, three, four, or five other tenants to get to where we are with one big company. I want the four or five other companies to come, too, but I want them to come around the anchor tenant that we have. And the proposal that you put together, you know, going forward, one proposal, and then meeting with them and hearing what other people are offering, and then coming to a spot in the middle that protects the citizens, protects the taxpayers, but also recognizes the opportunity to get a company that is growing internationally and wants to continue to grow and they want to do it here, is an amazing thing. And I know it's hard to come to when you've got people talking about all different sorts of tax pressures on one side and screaming corporate welfare to another, but also knowing that your opportunity as a town, this is the tool that you have to attract businesses to come in certain ways. You don't have the opportunities to do other things. CEAs are how towns, companies, and states all over the country attract businesses to them. And I know you put a lot of work into this, and obviously, I'm here to endorse the project and hope that you will as well. I just wanted to thank you for your time on that and for the due diligence you put into this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Sam Arciso, 16 Ruby May Lane. I'm going to just state out some facts. First, I got a question. After the 15 years, does the CEA go away?
It does.
Good point there. That increases the tax revenue quite a bit. And 15 years can go like that. WEX is a powerful Maine brand, and as an honor, they chose Scarborough for the place for their continued growth. It's a global company, Fortune 500 company, is one of the fastest-growing in the country, and will bring up to 1,200 jobs to town. That's a great thing. WEX will be a catalyst for growth for small businesses in the area. I am contemplating and working on bringing my companies to the Downs development. Having, when I heard the news they were coming, it just excited me more to make that happen. A big thing and a big part that really is important is WEX will help fix the mix of the 77% residential and 23% commercial tax base, which requires most of the services as the residential tax base. These guys don't require as much. That's a win. Other towns have incentives for business. Scarborough doesn't. This is a way for the town to be reasonably competitive. The WEX deal is contingent on incentive from the town. I support the WEX CEA. I ask you, please, take advantage of this wonderful opportunity we have in front of us. Thank you.
Any more?
Good evening. My name is Rick Shanay. I live at 9 Hampton Circle here in town. I come at this with a bit of historical perspective. I've lived in Scarborough for more than 26 years. I've had the pleasure of serving on a number of bodies, including the Planning Board, the 2006 Comprehensive Plan Committee, which I co-chaired with Sylvia Most. I'm currently serving on the Long Range Planning Committee, and we're working on the new comprehensive plan or the update of the comprehensive plan. I served on the Growth and Services Committee years ago with Bill Andreessen, and we worked hard to come up with numbers that supported how the town should grow. All those are committees, thank God, I don't have to get votes to get on, but it's been a pleasure to serve on them. One of the underlying themes in the Growth and Services Committee was the importance of commercial development for town versus residential. Residential brings children, it brings pressure on our school system. It's good to have a mix, but we, in the Growth and Services Report, pointed to the importance of raising the ratio of commercial development to residential development. Now we have an opportunity to bring in a world-class company. The state of Maine is fortunate that WEX is here, and Scarborough is fortunate that WEX wants to come here. I think the issue before you is pretty straightforward. We're talking about a modest investment by the town, and really, it's not really an investment because it only gets paid if the taxes are generated, as Attorney Cook Mueller has explained. I think it's a very important opportunity for the town. I think the investment is worth it. I think this will spur other development in town. It's just, to me, an opportunity that may never come again in terms of this type of a company. So I strongly support the credit enhancement agreement and the deal that you have outlined, and I hope that the council sees it that way and agrees to vote in favor of this agreement. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others? I think. If there's anybody else, could you line up, please, so we have an idea of the time? Sorry, Jen.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Ladd. I live at 12 Powderhorn Drive. I'm a member of the Town's Transportation Committee here, and I just, and through my professional career in another community, I have a lot of experience with the reinvestment of funds that companies like WEX stand to contribute. So things like, you know, roadway improvements, sidewalk improvements, signal upgrades, things like that, that, you know, these are improvements that are required over time, but sometimes it's long after the, you know, the big splash of someone new coming to town. But those needs don't go away. It's not a secret that our infrastructure here and elsewhere in Maine and everywhere else is aging at a rate that we're really not able to keep up with, with the, you know, local, state, and federal funds that were given for these improvements. So any opportunity that we have to sort of think creatively and work collaboratively with, you know, in our own communities and with partners that are interested in coming into these towns like ours, bringing their employees, reinvesting their, you know, their time and contributions in our community, but also helping out specifically with our infrastructure networks, I think it's really important. And, you know, I just would echo a number of comments made previously by other folks here about things like the opportunity that this investment would bring for things like advancing sustainable and alternative transportation methods, that we just, we really don't have a strong bus network, for example. In Scarborough, it's here, but it's not, you know, it's not widely used, and a large anchoring corporate partner like WEX could, you know, could be sort of a catalyst for that, and that would stand to benefit not only their employees, but a lot of other people as well. And, you know, again, attracting the other sort of subsidiary businesses that would definitely come here as a result of a larger tenant like this, I think are attractive. So I don't envy the work that you've had to do to get this far, but as a resident here, I appreciate that, and I hope that, I hope that this conversation continues and we're able to continue to attract good corporate partners like this here. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any others? Any others?
Thanks, council. Katie Foley, 7 Acorn Lane. So, no intention of speaking here and staying even for the rest of the council meeting this evening, but I missed you all so much, so. You know, when I think back to my time on the council and some of the tough decisions that came before us, none being more difficult than the vote on the Downs itself. That was by far and away the most difficult personal vote I had to take. But when I did that and I took that vote, it was the big picture I was looking at. It was like, what is the net, what's going to happen tomorrow or three years or five years? I was looking at 15, 20, or 30 years down the road. And for me, when I think about that part of that vote, it was because of something like this opportunity. And I think sometimes it's easy to get lost in the piece of, well, I didn't want this to happen anyway, I didn't want, you know, let's just face it, let's, I don't know if you guys have talked about this, but the elephant in the room is that if this council were voting on that same project today, it may not have happened at all. But here we are, so why not give the developers and this opportunity every chance it has to hit the grand slam that we were hoping for? Because I can tell you that that's what my vote was for. I didn't want them to get to first base or second base. I wanted them to hit all of those goals, and when they hit all of those goals, the whole town is going to benefit. Big picture. So I think there's been very good points made on all sides, and there's certainly, this is not a cut-and-dry no-brainer, but I would encourage you to support this because I do think it's the best way for us to maximize the full project. So, good luck.
Thank you. Any more? No? Okay. With that, I will close public comment. Oh, Peter?
Just, we talked about reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're absolutely correct. There was one email that requested to be read into the public record, so.
The individual wasn't available to be here tonight. It is Brian Canoe at 6 Old Colony Lane, and he just asked this to be read into the public record. And I'm going to read it verbatim. "It is time to let the Downs project stand on its own two feet. In council meeting after council meeting, the Downs developers and some town councilors chanted that there would be no risk to the town if we gave $81 million tax break. This public-private partnership tax break was supposed to help ensure success of the Downs project, yet here we are again, given another tax break to another wealthy developer, a new CEA for $2.25 million for a new WEX building on the Downs property. Who's next in line for a tax break? The planned edge sports facility, the planned hotel, the planned supermarket? We need to stop the corporate welfare, let the Downs developers use the existing $81 million tax break to entice new businesses? That's what it's for. Scarborough is one of the fastest-growing and most desirable towns in all of Maine. We shouldn't have to pay businesses to come here. They should be willing to pay, they should be paying us. Town leaders need to have more confidence and faith in what we have to offer in Scarborough. If a new business decides not to come here, it is their loss and other business will take their place." So, thank you for letting me read that in.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yes, thank you. With that, I will close public comment. And before...
Yes. We have had a lot of letters. Not everybody came to speak, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't read them all into the record, but we read them all, yeah.
Very, very good point. With that, I'll close public hearing. Is there any temperature amongst the councils to make comments before I close it, since there's a large audience and I think? No? Okay.
Sure.
Well, if we choose not to as a group, then, no? Okay. I'm going to take a five-minute recess because my hunch is everybody wants to, there are a chunk of people in here want to leave. So I'm going to take a five-minute recess. We will reconvene at 8:03. So I'm going to take a five-minute recess, we will reconvene at 8:03. Okay, welcome back. We are back from our brief five-minute recess. We are on to order number 20008, a 7:00 PM public hearing and second reading on the request to change a street name pursuant to Chapter 309, the Town of Scarborough Street and Development Names and Numbers Ordinance, Section 4, renaming of an existing street. And I believe Counselor Hamel's going to offer up a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that this be postponed indefinitely, tabled indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor? Order number 20016, public hearing in action on the new request for a food handler's license and liquor license from Alex Maracasus DBA Cowbell Hospitality II LLC, located at 185 U.S. Route 1. And this is sponsored by the Town Clerk.
This is a business that's going into, it used to be 21...
Hit her.
Sorry. 21 taps, I believe it was.
Oh, right.
It's, the applicant has filed a application, it's complete, we're recommending that it be approved and would be issued once the certificate of occupancy has been issued to, by the Planning Board, Planning and Codes Office.
Just as an editorial note, this is a business that's, has a current location, I think this will be their second location, but they're currently in Pittsburgh Road Main Street.
As a third note, I think they're next to Tulu Salon and Spa, I think. That was probably illegal, I apologize. Do I have a motion?
We need a public...
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing. Anybody? One of you guys? No? Nothing? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion?
Um...
Yep.
I'll just say, welcome to town.
Sounds good. Anymore? All those in favor? Okay, moving on, first reading, excuse me, order number 20017, first reading and schedule a public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 607, the Town of Scarborough Alarm Systems Ordinance, and to repeal Chapter 607A, the Town of Scarborough Fire Suppression and Detection Ordinance. And this is brought to us from the ordinance committee and our fire chief.
Chief Thurlow is here, and maybe best for him to introduce.
Good evening. As I explained to the ordinance committee when we met with them, this really is, does a couple of different things. It cleans up two ordinances and combines them into one, and it is really driven by the fact that as part of the public safety building process for the new facility, we needed to make a decision about our old legacy municipal fire alarm system. We've had a hard-wired copper wire on the telephone pole system for over 50 years now that has served us very well, but when it came time to look at the design of the new building, there was a significant expense to move that infrastructure from there to here, and also the ongoing expense of maintaining a hard-wired system versus modern technology that is based on radio mesh technology. So during the design phase of the building, the committee looked at it, and we decided that it really was time to replace our old system. So a lot of the language in here deals with that specific new system. We use the, the fire alarm system covers all of the municipal buildings and many of the school buildings, the sanitary district is on it, but we also, for years, have allowed private businesses that were in the vicinity where those wires ran to jump onto our system as well, at no cost over the years, because the system was there and it was sending the signal into dispatch anyway. With this new system now, it is still going to be a direct connection to dispatch, it is a much more modern and easier to maintain and less expensive to maintain system, and we think that now it opens it up to pretty much any business in town can jump onto the system, because you don't have to be on a road where that wire runs by your front door. So we're, the language in here takes care of compliance and the language necessary for the new system, and it also combines those two ordinances together. With that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Gleising?
Is there a financial impact to the ordinance change?
There is. It isn't necessarily in the ordinance, but as part of the request, I have asked the clerk to add fees into the fee schedule, because that's where those are kept during the budget process. What we are, what we have done historically is dispatch has always monitored that system at no charge to any of the users. Because there are software service agreements and maintenance agreements for the equipment, we are asking for a nominal fee that is in line, or actually a little less expensive than monitoring through a private company, and those fees are $500 per year to monitor for either fire or burglary. If you wanted to monitor for both, it would be $750 a year, and a one-time initial permitting and commissioning fee, because it's a, it's a piece of hardware that you have to attach to your fire alarm system, and then folks from public safety have to program that into our system, and there is a commissioning process, so that fee covers the cost of the fire inspector actually going out and testing the system and the hardware and the back office work to get it into our system so that everything works well.
Just to follow up to that, so in terms of all the changes, is there any, do you expect any net impact cost to the town, increased or decreased?
We think over time, we probably will generate more revenue as the system starts to build out and more businesses are interested in going this way. We think probably the revenues will exceed the expenses. In the budget that I'm working with the police chief on now for this next fiscal year, we're going to budget a net-neutral amount, just based on where we are with the number of subscribers that I'm comfortable predicting revenues from, and the annual expense for that software and upkeep of the system. So there won't be any additional revenues in this next fiscal year, but I think as the system grows, there probably will be some...
Counselor Clucci?
Yeah, so I'm just really interested in this. I have a motel and we have a monitoring system. Are you kind of cutting out the middleman with this new technology?
It does.
Okay.
And what we've told the folks on our existing system is you don't have to come with us, you certainly can continue, or can change and have a third party, hire one of the third-party folks to monitor for you, but this is another option for you. And one of the, some of the language in the ordinance, actually, there are some occupancies, some of the high-hazard occupancies, that we are requiring to monitor through this. So the schools, for instance, they're already taken care of, but there are a list of other high-hazard occupancies where we just don't want that additional delay. And this was monitored, this was, not monitored, modeled after the city of Portland and some other communities that were doing something similar, so that dispatch was actually getting those signals within seconds, rather than waiting for the signal to go to a third-party system, having an operator from out of state or out of the country calling, saying, you know, this is what's going on at the building across the street.
So, kind of a crazy follow-up, my business is in Old Orchard, we share dispatch. Is there opportunity for businesses in Old Orchard to hop onto this system?
There likely will be going forward, yes.
Good to know. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Chief, what's the number of subscribers we have now? Do you know? Commercial, commercial side?
Separate from the municipal and...
Yes, non-municipal, private companies, do you know?
I don't have that information in front of me, Counselor. I'm guessing that it's in the, maybe 15 to 20.
Oh, okay, so a minimal...
It's not a huge number. And out of that list, we've been working with these folks for over a year now. We started back in December of 18th to let them know that this change was coming. I think we've got maybe six or eight that have committed to come with the new system. We've got a bunch of the rest that have decided to go third-party.
Well, I had somebody contact me, so I'm just going to ask you what he had asked me. Apparently, he's up in the Dunston area now, so I think the assumption that he's hard-wired into the Dunston station, is that correct?
It was correct years ago.
Okay.
My predecessor, a number of years ago, allowed that particular occupancy to connect to the Dunston Fire Station.
Right.
We upgraded that fire alarm system, I can't remember now, three, four years ago.
Okay.
And at that time, they, that occupancy put their own system in, so that we weren't bearing the liability of monitoring a non-town-owned building, in case that connection ever gets...
So nobody's hard-wired to Dunston anymore, they're directly coming in the old system?
They're hard-wired into the old system.
Right.
But it's from their own fire alarm panel, only taking care of their occupants.
Okay, right, thank you.
Anymore?
Yep.
Counselor Caterina?
Could you remind me, Chief, can private residences apply or get onto this program if they wish?
Yes.
Anymore? Does motion... Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, I was just going to say, this was vetted in ordinance, and we think it's a good idea, so just want to let you know that.
Anymore? All those in favor? Thank you. Order number 20018, first reading and scheduled public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 303, the Scarborough Personnel Ordinance. And this is brought to us from the ordinance committee and Human Resources. And I assume Mr. Gallagher will tee this up for us?
Yes, if you would. Good evening. Liam Gallagher, Director of Human Resources. There are two proposed changes before the council this evening pertaining to Chapter 303 of the Personnel Ordinance, specifically Section 302, which is the provision for overtime and compensatory leave, and Section 515, which is speaking to the retirement provision. So the proposed changes look somewhat simple in, within their edits, but there's obviously a level of complexity, I think, to evaluating the proposal. So I'll try to go do a high-level overview of what we're talking about, the concept behind it. There's been a request out of ordinance committee for some financial analysis to give a better idea what the impact could be, and then answer any questions that the council has. So, the first change to Section 302, again, seems very simplistic. It's essentially to replace compensatory leave for holiday leave for the purposes of calculating overtime. So this whole formula around hours worked in terms of a work week, you know, essentially our ordinance speaks to beyond just purely hours worked, what counts as hours worked for the purposes of hitting that 40-hour threshold. So as it stands now, all other accruals are factored into that calculation, except for holiday time. The thing that's a bit unique about that is that holiday time's really the only time off that we don't really give employees the option to take or not. So, you know, we have a week, a work week where there's a holiday on a Monday, we tell everyone to stay home, and then generally, the concept around overtime is we are, we are asking or burdening an employee to work over and above their regular schedule. So I attempted to provide one illustrative example in my memorandum to this concept and why we think it's problematic and unfair on some level. It's something that, in my experience, I've never seen holiday time as a, as an accrual that doesn't count for this calculation. I've seen lots of policies and contracts that exclude, you know, sick leave or compensatory leave or other forms, but never holiday, because that is one that's scheduled for time off. So that's, you know, in terms of why removing compensatory leave, I've provided an example of why I think that's problematic to include it, this idea of being able to pyramid your time off. For those who are unfamiliar with public sector wage and hour laws, one unique component for public sector employers is that they do allow employees to earn time off in lieu of overtime pay. So they work, you know, 42 hours in a work week, rather than taking two hours of overtime, they can get three hours of comp time, put it on the books. That next pay period, they take three hours off, they work some additional overtime, they can kind of compound or multiply that. So that's why we're proposing this sort of replacement or switch, if you will. So that's the high level. I'm not sure if the council would like me to talk about sort of a model fiscal impact around this provision before I move on to the next change, or whether, like I said, defer to the chair or Counselor Hamel.
I've had the opportunity to go through this with Liam in some detail and have shared some of the information with the chair. You know, the costs are nominal for this. I've also consulted Mike Shaw, you know, his group would be one of the largest groups affected potentially, and so, you know, the impact's somewhere around, you know, we estimate $5,000 in terms of the swap. You have to evaluate the cost of the new way to calculate it with an offset of people, you know, how often they're going to choose to take the compensatory time instead. So the, so I would say this is a, it's a minimal expense, and, you know, Mike Shaw supports it as well, so we felt that this was a reasonable request. The big point about this is that it is a parity issue for non-bargaining unit staff, in addition to being somewhat of an employee recognition matter, so that's an important feature for us as well. So I just thought I'd add those points.
Yeah, great points, and that was a piece I overlooked in my introduction, that, looking at the three other, we really have four major employee groups in town. We have a large group of non-bargaining employees for which this ordinance sort of speaks to the terms and conditions of employment, and we have three collectively bargained units. And in all of those contracts, holiday time is regarded as hours worked for the purposes of overtime. So this is really an equity component to it as well. Why don't I move on to the second proposed change before the council? To give some background on this, you know, this was not a change that came to us, this is the result of a legislative policy or rule change at the main public employee's retirement system level. Essentially, what it states is that if a public, participating local district, which are municipal employers, employs someone who is defined as a retiree returned to work by the main per system, so this is someone who has retired from another PLD employer, or in fact, the PLD employer that's reemploying them, and is actively collecting a benefit from the system, then the employer is obligated to remit a 5%, what they call a UAL, or unfunded actuarial liability payment, to the system. It's essentially a penalty. The retiree receives no benefit from that, that's not adding to their service, it's not adding to their, to their income. Essentially, the background to this was, you know, as most pension systems, again, you know, you don't have to read too far in terms of government budget news, but most pension systems have a challenge of staying adequately funded, and they identify this idea of employers reemploying retirees as sort of having a double impact to them. Not only are they losing money from the fund, if you will, by paying a benefit to a retiree, they're collecting a pension, but they're essentially holding a seat from someone who otherwise could be contributing to the plan. So they saw this as the remedy to solve some of that sort of drain on the, on the system. So, you know, by main public employee's retirement system, there's an incredible amount of flexibility at the local level with how to handle this. They essentially say, as long as we get our 5%, who funds that, whether that's the employee or the retiree in this case, or the employer, doesn't much matter to us. However, this is being brought forward at the council level so that we can have consistency across how we're going to address this issue. You know, the other factor here, and as proposed, what we would say is that if you meet this definition of a retiree returned to work... Sort of the thought process or the hypothesis behind this change is that if you have someone who's actively collecting a pension, perhaps, you know, saving for a secondary retirement's not as important to them as possibly receiving a paycheck at the time. And, you know, this idea that they're gonna pay a five percent on their own, deducted from their wages for which they see no benefit, on top of, you know, a six percent contribution to a retirement plan with a vesting schedule, just doesn't seem as practical or pragmatic for me. So, that's sort of the concept behind this proposal. You know, in terms of the fiscal impact, by eliminating their opportunity to participate in the 401A plan, which is a one-to-one match at six percent, we essentially have a one percent realized savings overall, or at least potential exposure to that liability. So, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that change.
Counselor Caterina?
Just for clarification for the public, and I'm sorry if you said it, I got distracted for a second. How many people is this affecting right now?
Yeah, so we have about a hundred non-union full-time employees. In terms of actually this provision...
The retirement.
We have one person who meets this definition of retiree returned to work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Is there a motion on the table?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
This came out of, I'm sorry, this came out of ordinance. We looked at it and asked our various questions, whatever, and we felt that these were fine. These were good changes, so...
So, I just had one suggestion. In the future, I think it would be helpful if we do these as separate orders. So, I mean, I know we put them together because they were personal ordinance changes, but nah, they're different enough that I think it might be more efficient in our discussion and easier to keep some of the technical issues and questions separate. So, it's just a small request procedurally, but I'm in favor of both of these.
Yeah, I think I'll just say, Counselor Hamel, thank you. I don't know if everybody saw it, but you did do some extra legwork just to get an idea of the costs, and I believe you forwarded that to everybody.
Yeah, I did.
I do appreciate you answering that question before it gets brought here to help us make this...
I just might add that my learning curve is still steep as I become accustomed to the public sector.
Yeah.
With that, all those in favor? All right. Order number twenty zero one nine, acting on the request for, excuse me, from the police chief to accept the following two grants given by the state of Maine. First grant is to subsidize, for substance use disorder in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and the second on would deal, and the second would deal with domestic violence and human trafficking in the amount of forty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Combined total of forty-four, excuse me, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. And Chief Moulton, would you like to tee this up for us?
Good evening. A while back, we, there was an introduction from the state that they were looking for proposals for approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant money that they had available for substance use disorder-related programs. And we decided to look at that and see what we might be able to put together, and so we put this proposal together for slightly more than the four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, but we were one of three people, that, three places that put in proposals, and the other two were smaller proposals, and they were full-funded. And so, when it came to ours, they liked the program, they cut us back about twelve thousand dollars, and so, I think you have the memo before you, but the proposal or the grant basically will allow us to carry forward with what we're doing now with providing people with treatment and travel and so forth. One of the things that we are going to do is open up a little because, over time, we've come to realize that the real villain here is the addiction, is the substance use disorder, the disease, not necessarily a particular substance. Clearly, we started this because heroin was such an issue and people were dying rapidly, but there are many other substances that folks have come in looking for help that we have, to this point, turned away. Because we weren't sure where we are operating on grants and donations, we weren't sure we would have the money to support going, opening up anymore. With this grant, we will slowly start to do that and try to assist other people that are struggling. So, that's what part of the money is for. Then, we looked at what else could we do, and one of the issues that folks have when they, many of the people that come to us literally have the clothes on their back when they go to treatment. And it's great that they get there and get treatment, but they come back home, and they're in that same situation. And it's very difficult and very stressful when they come back to try to get reestablished when they have nothing to start with. So, one of the things that we have talked a lot about with people in the recovery community and so forth is the ability to provide a limited amount of time. We certainly don't want to give an amount of time that would enable folks to any degree, but a limited amount of time for somebody coming back, that might be thirty days, that might be sixty days, it depends really on the situation. But simply to have a safe, sober house to go to, to get reestablished so that they can start looking at work opportunities, start finding an apartment or a place on their own, and just get re-acclimated to society. So, that's part of the money. We also, my ultimate goal is that I would like to package up a program that we could hand off to either the state or, if not the state, regionally, maybe to the county, and show a model that works, and a comprehensive model that works. And, but to do that, I think we need to show, to be able to provide some data to show what the success really looks like. To this point, we haven't been able to do that because it's only a couple of us that are, that are working on it aside from our regular responsibilities, so we just haven't had the time to go back. Anecdotally, I can tell you that a lot of people come in, thank us for the treatment, tell us we've saved their lives, we've saved their granddaughter's lives, and we get letters and that type of thing, so, and we have done some follow-up, but not a systematic follow-up. So, part of this money would be to hire, to provide a salary and benefit package for one-year project manager to do follow-up and to see what our successes have really looked like so that we could, in fact, give a model that we know is, we could explain and provide a model that shows some success. So, that's, there's money in there for the salary and benefit, and we also, and I would say too, that these grants were written by the Social Services Navigator that you provided the funding for in our last budget, and she's doing some really good work, and she's really hit the ground running, and these were two successful grants on her part. And so, one of the other pieces of that would be if we were to get that position, she would like to work, when I say she, I say the law and our Social Services Navigator, would like to work with that person to start a lead program, which is a law enforcement-assisted diversion program, so, which would allow us to deal with people who may have some minor trouble with the law and, before they get into the court system, be able to provide some treatment or some assistance if they need it. And also to, for our officers, when they identify somebody who's going down that path, maybe they haven't been arrested yet, but it's very clear that that's the path that they're going. And these would be voluntary things, voluntary programs, but we feel that there would be people that would take advantage of them. And then, when Steffi was here earlier and talked about Project Grace, for those of you who've been around for a while, you know that Project Grace was founded by a lady named Karen Packham, and her husband Dave has been very interested, she and her husband Dave, have been very interested in starting a pilot project around substance use messaging, particularly in our schools. We certainly have had the DARE program around for a long time, but that messaging is outdated, and we're really looking ultimately for K-12 messaging. But the pilot program that Dave has put together is to, is five communities, it's Scarborough, Bath, Wyndham, Gorham, and Yarmouth. And the administrators for those school districts are all on board with this, and what we're going to try to do is roll out a program for the next school year, and so we're working through that now. But as an example, one of the things that they're talking about doing is having a contest of those five high schools for students to come up with age-appropriate messaging around substance use, maybe a thirty-second public service announcement, and not have to be done with any professional, just on an iPhone or, I mean, just a phone or whatever. And then, they would compete against people from their own school district, and the winner would get a, would get a cash prize, and then those, maybe a thousand dollars, and then those folks would compete, those five people from the different school districts would compete for another cash prize. And then, the winner of that, that PSA, and maybe more than one, with some of this funding from this grant would go towards having that PSA professionally done, produced, so that, and buying some airtime so that that could air on some of the local news stations and so forth. Because we believe that we have got to reach our young folks at a younger age, and we believe that we've got to come up with some, some modern-day messaging that's gonna fight off the messaging that they see on TV every day, which is, you've gotta drink alcohol, have a good time, you've gotta, now it's vaping, it's this, it's that, it's something else. This messaging is kind of being driven down these kids' throats, and we're not providing anything to fight that off. So, that, in a nutshell, that's what we plan on doing with that grant. I would say that there is one more step to the grant, that it has to go back to the procurement division, just to make sure that everything was done properly. I don't see any issues with that at all. I expect that we'll get the official notification, but that is, we do have to wait on that. And then, the other grant that we were talking about is the Domestic Violence and Human Trafficking Grant. There's a fairly significant problem with human trafficking in Cumberland County, and the new District Attorney is really encouraging departments to move forward in that direction. And so, that grant money, the forty-one thousand, would be for overtime for our special enforcement folks to be able to do those types of details, and also for officers who have to go do follow-up domestic violence, follow-up visits with our Social Services Navigator, they would do that rather than take somebody off the road that we're counting on for patrol, we could do that as an overtime detail. And both of these grants are reimbursable grants, so we would be obligated to spend the money and then be reimbursed for it.
Questions?
Yes, Chief, I had a question for you.
Sure.
On the, you know, thanks for locating these grants and going through all the work to obtain this money. One of them is for a one-year salary, this one, that's the seventy thousand dollar one, is that right?
Correct.
So, what's the expectation after the end of the grant? Would that be an assumption that we would have a full-time position or somehow have to fund that, or what would we do?
No. I think, I think in a year's time, we would be able to develop some mechanisms for doing that follow-up, and we would be able to reach out to those four hundred and some odd people that we have placed in treatment to this point and get the follow-up done with them. Moving forward, I think we would be able to accomplish that without that position. The plan would be, yeah, I understand what you're saying, no, we would not plan on trying to fund that position beyond that one year. We're looking for, we're looking, and it's gonna take the right individual to be able to do that and knowing upfront that it's a one-year type of position, but there are folks out there that are engaged and are willing to do that.
Okay. And the, one other question I had, Chief, if I may, there's a forty-one thousand, five ninety that you've identified that would be a, you know, salary and overtime expense. So, is that something you plan to submit as part of your budget this year, or how are we planning to fund that?
Yeah, I mean, if, when we get the official notification of this, that's something that we would, we have grant accounts now that we run, so we would be looking for something net neutral. So, we would be putting in expenses that would go with that and offsetting that with, because this is new overtime, this is not overtime that we're expending now.
I understand.
We're using regular patrol officers to do that, but this is an opportunity to have that funded so that we can keep people on the road and still accomplish those tasks.
And arguably, these costs would not be incurred but for grant support.
I see.
You would be doing additional details.
I understand.
Counselor, answer?
Yeah, it's really just kind of a, it was the same question I think Counselor Hamel had. So, you answered, there's seventy-five, but the eighty-two thousand for a pilot, and then my question around the forty-one thousand, these, as long as the expectations are managed that these are just for this grant but not necessarily woven into the fabric, I know sometimes grants have a way of creeping over into standard business.
Yeah. No, I hear you. But, no, that's not, that's not the intent.
Yeah, so, your answer on the seventy-five, I'm assuming is similar to the eighty-two and the forty-one, that would be clear that this is for the grant or a designated project.
Yeah, we're hoping that we can get that pilot project rolled out there and get, buy some airtime and do those kind of things and get some messaging rolling, and then we'll done our work.
Great. Thank you.
Can the seventy-five-six be a one-year contractor? I mean, does it have to be a salary and benefit position, or it, not that it necessarily matters to me, but I'm, what I'm hearing is...
Sure. We put it together as salary and benefits as a one-year thing, certainly, yeah.
The nature of it just seems more of a contractor.
There would be very clear expectations through the recruitment process and certainly the hiring that it is a grant-funded, sort of soft-money position, that it is a short-term position.
Right.
Counselor Kluge?
So, I think it's fantastic that you're getting grants to do all of this work. To some extent, it seems like it's a part of our responsibility as a town to take care of some of this stuff. So, I understand it's a pilot program and that it's gonna be funded through the grants today. If the pilot's successful and you are able to demonstrate that there's a benefit to doing it, would you see positions ultimately coming out of this so that instead of funding this through grants, this is funded through our regular processes and ways of doing business?
I would say no at this point. Like I say, on the, on the one position that we're talking about, the eighty-two thousand that we're talking about for the messaging and so forth is not a position or anything, it's airtime and providing the prizes for that type of contest and that type of thing, pamphlets, all of that kind of thing. And I think if that was successful, I think that there would be other, number one, other communities, but I think there may be businesses too that would get behind that and assist with that. So, we're hoping it's a pilot that catches on, that the idea was that if we could get these five communities and show that this can work, that maybe this would be, Gordon Smith, who's the substance use czar for the state, has talked to us a lot about this, and I think if, I think if this pilot worked, it's something that they would want to take and maybe expand on more of a statewide basis.
Okay. Thank you.
What, about how many people, so this is, you'd be working with Scarborough residents, right? This isn't like the community at large, this is, was for Scarborough residents, that the current treatment and travel and the sober living program and all that, that's for Scarborough residents, right?
No. No, it's not. We've had people from all over the state coming to us.
Okay. So, it's a, it's, how do they come to you? How does that...
How do they?
Yeah.
Word of mouth, I think. People hear about the program, and so they, they have come here. There are other programs throughout the state, similar programs.
Okay.
But we've been pretty successful, and people recognize that, and so they tend to come to us.
So, about how many people do you think you'll impact, I mean, with these programs? What numbers are you looking at now and in the future?
It's really hard to say when we, we have a, we have a fair amount of people that we turn away now. People hear about the program and and so they they have come here. There are other programs throughout the state, similar programs.
Okay.
But we've been pretty successful and people recognize that. And so they they tend to come to us.
So about how many people do you think you'll impact? I mean, with these programs, what what numbers are are you looking at now and in the future?
It's it's really hard to say when we we have a, we have a fair amount of people that we turn away now because we're not really set up to to deal with something other than opioids. I don't know what that will look like when when that word gets out. And that's why we have not, to this point, done that, because we didn't know what was going to happen. And we didn't have that kind of funding to to support if all of a sudden we had a lot of people coming.
Chief, can you speak to the number that you you sent in for opioid?
Yeah, it's a little over four hundred that we've actually placed in treatment since we started in in November fifteenth, October fifteen, November fifteen. We've probably had, I would say, nine hundred to a thousand folks that have come in. But we don't, we don't take everybody that comes in. We do a screening process and there are reasons why there are some people that we won't accept into the program or can't accept into the program. So and then there are people that are just not ready. And part of our screening process is to is to, you know, sit down and talk with them about their commitment and their their enthusiasm for this. And there are folks that come in that are brought in by their husbands, wives, brothers, sisters, grandparents, whatever. And all of those people want this really, really bad, except for the person that that actually needs it. And in those situations, we recognize that fairly readily. And and we're not able to, it's not that we're not able, I just don't think it's good policy to to spend, we're trying to be good shepherds of the money that's been donated or granted to us. And and so when somebody is showing that they're probably not going to be successful, we're we're not sending them.
And I'm sure you have people working on this, but if you if you want to get young people, probably TV, they don't watch TV anymore, or the radio.
Yeah.
Getting to them is going to be a whole different.
It's easy, it's TikTok, you're done. It's easy.
Yeah, TikTok, yeah.
No, you're right. And we're and we're aware of all those things. The one thing that we felt that not just the kids, but parents too, do tend to watch is local news. So we were, that's one of the things that we were looking at, airtime in that particular category. But those are all things that we're working through now. They're they're just ideas at this point, but they're ideas that we're trying to trying to move forward. Dave is, as Karen is too, they're real doers. And and they have really taken an interest in this, they want to move it forward. And they're the type of people that really can make things happen.
I just want to provide just a bit of background. And I appreciate that many of you on council now weren't on when this program started. I really credit Chief Moulton and the staff for recognizing a need, not knowing what the depth and the severity that need are, much less how to deal with it, but doing something totally different. And for law enforcement to do the sort of work that they're doing, kind of the social service work, is a whole mindset change. And I credit Chief for showing the leadership on this. Councils through the years have have supported it. The chief has essentially done this without local taxpayer support. It's all been done through grants and donations. And the goal has always been to find a better model. You know, this was never, this is not sustainable. We know that from the first day we started. But they're still showing up at our front door looking for help. And frankly, there's not another solution, regional, much less statewide. So the fact that we secured seventy five percent of the available state money statewide should suggest to you the level of confidence they have in Chief Moulton. And for the state's benefit, but also for ours, we truly need to find a better model to be able to replicate this to reach more people. So I credit his steadfast leadership on this, but it's time for us to pass the torch on to someone that can do it and provide even more impact. And this grant will really set the table for that, we hope.
Thank you. And the reason that we broke it up the way we did is is that it really is more than just providing the treatment and travel that we have. I've always said, I think this is, you know, we need the prevention education, we need the enforcement, and we need the the treatment and so forth. They've all got to be in place in order for for us to find our way out of this.
Yeah, congratulations on the grant. I remember I was on the council when we green lighted the original Operation Hope. And you're far too modest about it. It was really the first program in the state. It was modeled after a program in Gloucester, Massachusetts. And it has taken off in the state. And when I'm talking the program, I talk about Operation Hope. I know individuals who've been helped by this program. And the ramifications are wide, broad and wide, and we'll never know sometimes, you know, the success we've had. But I I just, I'm just absolutely thrilled that you were able to land this amount. This is a big chunk of money for a grant, for almost five hundred thousand dollars. And I also like the the youth factor of it and letting the kids take the lead, so to speak, because they'll know where it needs to go, like TikTok or whatever. So kudos. I think it's awesome.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir. Is there a motion on the table?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Hamel?
Yes, I just, you know, I wanted to echo the comments that several of them made about kudos to Chief and the the innovation and to try to find a solution for this problem that really touches everybody. There's clear there are unmet needs. So so we appreciate that, we've made a commitment to that. So don't, I don't want my questions about cost to be misinterpreted. Yet at the same time, I want to make sure that we follow a process for factoring in the costs associated with grants. This is not, you know, not cost neutral. And there aren't any savings that I see. It represents staff additions and other potentially and and other salary and benefits costs that may be incurred. And there may be growth of this, certainly the need, the demand is going to increase. So I I just want to make sure we we model that and we we have that go through the same approval process that we will be following for the budget this year, so.
Anybody else?
No, I I echo Counselor Hamel's comments. I'm pretty well satisfied, I think, from this particular case that I don't think we run the danger of creep, so to speak, or of a position that's created and then and then essentially assumed to be renewed in perpetuity. I think there's, if you look back on the the back page of the pilot program, I see lots of crossover with the DARE program, updating the DARE program. If this is successful, maybe the DARE officers adapt more of the seed program or what have you. So there seems to me there could be lots of lateral movement in staff if something does take off. The last thing I want to say is, a lot of times we talk about what's our return on investment. So, you know, that navigator position was one of discussion this year. And it's great to see that we we invested, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy five thousand dollars all in on that neighborhood, excuse me, on the navigator position. And here we're looking at a half million dollar grant. So that's a good ROI as far as I'm concerned, so. Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Okay, order number twenty zero two zero, act on request from the Shellfish Commission to approve the allocations of Shellfish license, Shellfish licenses for twenty twenty. And I believe Mr. Harbor Master is here to speak to us real quick. Sorry, Mr. Rizardi.
Good evening. The Shellfish Committee this year is asking to leave the same number of licenses that were issued last year. There was discussion about an increase, but that was held. Just so you're aware, the Shellfish Committee, we have engaged in surveys this year, as well as some other conservation projects. And right now, we're working with Down East Institute to to bring in some larger conservation projects. So I think the committee has fulfilled their, you know, obligation to to do the conservation end. The other thing that I was happy with this, with no increase, is that we're anticipating maybe two or three licenses that are going to become available, resident commercial licenses. So even though they didn't increase the number of licenses, there are in fact going to be some become available.
Any questions? Counselor Hayes?
I don't miss those conversations necessarily, I'm sure. But a question for you, just generally, you know, I know a lot of times part of it is just really trying to figure out what is the health of the flats and is it producing, you know, and I know that that's part of the surveys and trying to get a handle on that. But on the landings and other things, has production been pretty steady? Has it been increasing, decreasing?
I think we're on track. Last year Scarborough brought in most clams in the state by a few. We landed. I think we're on track right now. I will tell you, there's a couple areas getting a little thin. The other thing that I'm working on with the with the committee chairman is to protect upper clay pits. Traditionally, what's happened is we we were involved in water sampling and testing program. Upper clay pits, and that's what we used to call the donut hole, has been closed. There was a sword's leak a couple of years ago. That testing is becoming closer to being open. Normally, what happens is the deprecation crew will come in and take all the clams, and then the next water test is clean and it's open and there's no clams left for Scarborough diggers. So we're also filing for a pollution abatement closure on that as well, to add. So I I think we'll be okay going forward. This year, surveys, when they're completed, and then we'll have the data to look at the two surveys, and that's when you get the the true picture.
Was there any conversations of if those two or three licenses do become available? Are they going to at least pause and take a look at? Will some of that data you just referenced be available by then? Because I think the real concern is, is that there's always been that, you know, we don't want to overfish. And if you say some of the areas are getting thin.
A little bit, yeah.
That that might mean we're kind of at that critical point, and especially, and these are record landings that have been coming in, you're saying?
We with most of the state.
Yep, is that, how does it compare to prior years, higher?
Higher than prior years.
So so we're taking more off? So I mean, I guess, that would be my only question, is whether they're they're going to pause it and consider if they do have two or three licenses that become available to hold until some of that survey data is available.
Like I said, the discussions were had. There was talk of actually maybe increasing by one. As you know, they're a valuable commodity, so. And it was decided to stay status quo. And part of the reason for that was because we're going to have some of these become available. So it is an opportunity for other folks to, through the lottery process, to perhaps secure a resident commercial license. As far as the numbers go, once we have the next set of surveys done, then we can compare data. Right now, we only have one survey completed. So to answer your question, I I guess, you know, the the question on the table, I would say that leaving the number of licenses the same, in my opinion, will be okay. I don't think we need to hold back or decrease, if you will.
Would it be out of line to ask if we could have that data prior to next year's grant?
Once the surveys are done, yes.
I know, but I mean, the, I mean, as you, as these conversations have progressed, this wasn't asked two or three, it's been a long time in coming to get into the data. So I'm just wondering if us putting some type of caveat on saying, next year, it'd be great to have that data would help move.
That was the purpose of doing the surveys. But unfortunately, we only have one to start with. The committee, you know, within the last year, a little bit of pushing, I think, has moved back into the conservation role that they are supposed to fulfill and are actually seeking, you know, these conservation projects. So which is ultimately to protect the flats, to protect the the numbers and, you know, to keep that balance of what we're taking and what's growing in imbalance. You know, I think they're really trying to do the best they can.
Any more? No, okay. Is there a motion on the table?
Still moved.
Second. All those in favor? Nope, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a discussion, and actually, Counselor Hamel, I think you're the liaison to, is there, is there, is there a way to kind of really emphasize the importance of getting that survey data so that we actually have some numbers we can look at?
Yeah, I think that's a fair, a fair request. I don't know, Angelo, but the some some of the issues have to do with people doing the surveys. Is that the is, is that the problem or?
The, no, we don't have a budget for everything now. The the last one that was scheduled for the year was was postponed by the committee because everybody had already had their conservation time in.
Yeah.
So what we did is we we, when we set out to do the first survey, we started with the with the areas that needed that the most. And knowing that if we didn't get to the end, that those areas at the end were okay, and we could, we could work around that. That was by design.
So I I just think what, if I understand what Peter's driving at here is just sort of if there's a any way for us to utilize the survey data to to make it, you know, to have some facts to back up our our assumptions. And I trust you guys, you know, know the know the territory better than anybody. And I so I trust your, you know, your assessment and your recommendation. But I think where where possible, wherever we have data to support that would be very helpful.
And Mr. Hayes's question is a very fair question. I, you know, I just can't, I can't give him the answer right now because I don't have the two datas to compare. The surveys will be done, they've already been scheduled. They were scheduled, they're already scheduled ahead of time. In fact, we extended the conservation year, if you will, so we could get that last survey in as needed. So and that's by design. As you know, I push for these because I know that you folks, at times, you need numbers to to deal with, and you need numbers to be able to look at and and make a good vote, you know, other than taking it on faith. So hopefully, next year, we can bring you that data and and good hard data, and it'll come together.
Counselor Kluge?
Yeah, sorry. Since we're on the topic, I, this isn't my forte. But can you explain to me, does the number of licenses correlate with the the number of clams that are taken out of the beds? Or are there caps or quotas or? Uh oh. Was that too hard?
No, no.
I'm not, I'm interested in the answer.
A very, very quick answer is yes. That's, the number of licenses are set year to year. There hasn't been much change in the last couple of years. They are set by what the landings are. And the surveys tell us is, we can predict that we know what's going to be there, you know, six months from now or next season. One of the things that's bad about digging clams is, when you're digging clams, you're killing clams. So you always have to have that balance tip, that you're not killing more, you know, so that they're, they can survive. So that data, surveys is one way to do that. And they weren't being done prior to last year. So in order to get real numbers, then that's one of the ways to do it.
Counselor Hamel?
One thing I will say, you know, I'm somewhat familiar with with clambers, you know, the shellfish crowd. So at best, I'm a lousy recreational digger, you know, I'm not, I'm not very good at all. But I, one thing I do know is if if somehow Angelo's recommendation were off base, we would hear about it, okay? So there is a system in place. We, yes, so I, so to net this all, I'm quite comfortable with what Angelo is recommending, notwithstanding the fact that you were kind of data driven bunch here lately, so.
Any more? No, okay. All right, yeah, I got it, thanks. All those in favor? Item number nine is standing in special committee committee reports and liaison reports, and I'll start with Counselor Kluge.
Brief update, the, to my knowledge anyways, the Community Center Committee completed that report, their report. We have not taken receipt of that report yet as a council. I expect that will happen at some point in the near future. And there is still.
earlier amongst some of us, but just for some clarity, as the chair and vice chair, we were waiting for the consultant's report. We thought it would make the most sense to present these two to the public together. However, with that said, the Community Center Committee is done with their work, and they would like us to see it. So, we will be receiving it, my guess is, by the end of the week. And so, we'll have access to it, to read it, and to start looking over it. My intentions are to wait till the consulting report, but if anybody individually wants to come and suggests otherwise, I'm completely open to it. But that, that was the decision, so. But it's flexible.
Sorry. Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, I apologize in advance. We've got a couple of things tonight. One is, the Finance Committee did meet, our first Finance Committee meeting on 128. We did, and actually what came out of our Town Council workshop was an interest in getting the quarterly statements distributed to the Town Council on a very regular basis. So, I did distribute the statements that we did see. What I'll read into the record would be just, and what is done, is staff does a great job of kind of creating the, the financial numbers, not always real exciting to look at, because there's a lot of them. So, they do a executive summary for us. We have a short attention span. And they, they try to boil it down to a couple of things, a couple of things to report out where we are as of 12/31, so six months into this, this fiscal year, if you will. There are a couple of things that, that do stand out. General assistance, we've already, we've overspent the budget by about 100 percent. So, in other words, we have spent the whole budget as we sit here now. We actually think that that will probably continue. That will probably lead to an unbudget, an unfavorable budget variance of probably in the order to of magnitude of 30,000 or so. Two, the other thing, legal expenditures are overspent at this point in time by about 150 percent. So, legal bills are running a little bit higher than we thought. But the, the issue that I, that we probably, I just want to make everybody aware of, the, as we have done the revale, and as we've sat down with folks and looked at their evaluations and made some adjustments, to date, we've made adjustments of about $690,000 in reducing the original assessed values of the properties as it came through the revale. That will create some budget pressures at year end, but more importantly, as we sit here, as we start the budget season, the bigger impact of that, that means that as we head into the budget season, we have about $46 million less of assessed value. That will put some pressure on the mill rate as we calculate it. Usually, we have about 1 percent organic growth. This represents about a 1 percent reduction from how we set the mill rate a year ago. So, it's good for us to know that as we head into budget season, but that's going to create some, some challenges for us as we try to navigate to our goals of 3 percent. So, with that, I'll close that out. If anybody, and, oh, and Tom, Tom, maybe you could speak to it, but because of that, you shared with us that you are aware and you've asked staff, you've got a curtailment process in place on expenditures?
Yeah, I issued a curtailment mid-December-
Yeah, yeah.
...for a number of reasons that you mentioned, but, you know, to make sure we end this year properly and prepare for the future.
And with that, then the, the other thing I'll report on, the School Building Committee, they have moved through their process. The Board of Education has voted to proceed at looking at a consolidated school. They have put out a request for qualifications for the architect. They've actually got some of those results back, and they're scoring them and looking at them at this point in time to try to select a partner to go forward. And the last thing I'll update on, the library wants everybody to know that they have created a new website for the expansion, and there's information there about where they are in the expansion process and some of the preliminary thoughts and designs. That website is at expansion scarboroughlibrary.org. So, anybody that's interested, there's a lot of information out there on the library expansion. Again, it's expansion scarboroughlibrary.org. So, I guess with that, those are my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gleistine?
Rules and policies, we'll meet Tuesday morning at 8:30. And I reported this last time, there's a senior Valentine's Day dinner and show on February 12th. The deadline to register for that passed. It was Monday. But if you're still interested in it, please call Community Services at 730-4150 and see if they could still accommodate you for that. That is a 55 and older dinner. Thank you.
Counselor Catarina?
Historic preservation, they would like the public's help, especially the old timers in town, to let us know about various locales or corners, like for example, Libby Corner is down where Walmart is now, and some of those more, there's more obscure ones too, because we want to do a sign project of perhaps putting a little bit of, you know, historical signage about town with that. So, stay tuned to that. And then, I went to Augusta for the Legislative Policy Committee meeting. That's always a marathon session. We run through over 100 bills. The session is supposed to be an emergency session. Yeah, right. They have as many bills as they do in the so-called regular part of the session. But that being said, the committees in Augusta are moving really quickly through, through the piles. I didn't see anything that was of a particular, you know, impact upon Scarborough per se. I think I only have to go to, that was our only meeting, having to go to Augusta. We do, otherwise, we do it through Survey Monkey for any issues that come up. But that's where we're at with that.
Counselor Johnson?
Gee, thanks.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, the Communications Committee, we met this week. Couple of items maybe of interest. We met with the IT department, so we met with the new IT director, fairly new IT director, about eight months, right, Tom? And our new webmaster, they gave us an overview of the architecture of our current website tools, and was more of an, for an understanding from us to, so we knew where to focus our frustration about the websites. But actually, it was very informative, very eager new employees, three IT people on the Communication Committee. So, we had a good dialogue, I thought. We had, we had a certain level of understanding. There were some takeaways by them, not, we didn't give them work, Tom. We just asked them to look into a couple of things. And they were more than willing to. I, I have, they were going to look into our alert system. Can we set up an alert system for committee documents, council-related documents on the website directly to us, possibly the public also, looking into some of the indexing on our search results, because you know, that's part of our frustration on that. And there was one more, and I can't remember. Do you remember, John or Betsy? There were three takeaways. They were minor, they thought they were minor, wasn't going to cause them any work, but they could be big hits for us, so.
Subscriptions, I'm sorry, like, we didn't remember, like, the last.
I know, and it's late in the night. So, we'll let it go at that. Once, once we get the follow-up, we'll report back to it. Larissa is reaching out to Sedco to help us come up with a little design for a communication theme or campaign to get people engaged with the e-newsletter related to the charge from the council on the doubling the subscription of the e-newsletter, unless that's part of the curtailment that Tom just mentioned. She did say that we're $200 or $300 on the budget that she could probably use, so we'll have to wait and see on that. We're going to reinstate, for lack of a better term, the council corner on the e-newsletter. I'm going to be doing the rollout on the first one, so hold on to your pants on that for next week. But then, we're going to really look to the council for support. We'd like to have it at a minimum every month, but we'd like to have some type of council or corner information to share council-related information to the public. So, you'll be hearing from us, at least me, I'll be tapping you on the shoulder. Please. Remember, we have a Communication Committee sponsoring the roundtable on WEX. Staff is going to give a presentation of facts only. This is not to be a selling meeting. This is typical roundtable. People are invited. They're going to, we're going to share information just on the facts, and then we're going to take questions, comments from the public. All counselors are welcome to join. That's on the 13th, at 6:00 PM. I'll let it go to that, with that.
Where is your roundtable?
It's going to be right here. 6:00 PM on the 13th.
Counselor Hamel?
Thank you. A couple of updates for Appointments and Negotiations Committee. We met on Monday. Liam Gallagher joined us for an update on upcoming labor contract negotiations. Apparently, we've got the firefighters coming up. So, they're, they're having an initial management team meeting, I think, in a week or so. So, we'll look forward to, to tracking with them on their issues, and may, or likely have an executive session in March to talk about issues and objectives, with a focus on, you know, trying to get an idea of what sort of budget impact there might be, especially for the economic items. The other thing I wanted to update on is that we are going through a process of reviewing current committees and boards, ones that are required, ones that are on the books and active, and believe it or not, we have some on the books that are not active. So, we're looking at some potential opportunities, at possible consolidations. And, you know, so that'll be something that we'll, we'll be spending some more time on. We will be coming back with more details on the charge for staffing ad hoc committees. Peter and Jean Marie are going to be working on helping us to draft that, and we're going to wait until we get the report out from the ad hoc, the first ad hoc committee, or most recent one, the Community Center Committee, to capture those learnings and figure out what, what worked and what we might do going forward. So, that's, that's essentially it.
I'll use my time to, for two things. One, there is a joint committee, there's a joint workshop between the Town Council and the Board of Education next Wednesday at 6:00. It's at the high school. I strongly encourage everybody in the public to come see. It is at the high school. It's the room across from the old cafeteria, which I-
The all-purpose room.
The all-purpose room. Anyways, the purpose of that is to, we're going to have a presentation, first from their enrollment expert, second from Jay Chase. And our objectives are to agree on a common set of facts and language that we will use regarding growth and enrollment. We will also use the third hour to get an update on the eight corners portable financing, and to discuss some possibilities of a remedy, or perhaps a half pathboard for the turf and track fields. And I'll save those remedies for later, because I don't think they're 100 percent flushed out, so I don't want to necessarily insinuate one thing or the other. The second thing that dawned on me the other day is, you know, I think communication is something we're constantly trying to do, and I think that we dropped the ball a little bit on the ad hoc Community Center Committee, and I think I'll own that in the sense where we spent so much effort building up January 22nd, and then it never happened, right? So, I think sometimes we need to learn that perhaps we should communicate that things aren't happening, right? I don't think it's any harm, any foul, so to speak, but it just dawned on me that we had a pretty, we had a timeline laid out in that timeline. The timeline got tossed aside for many reasons, but I, I do think that ultimately, we'll feel better about the product that we're getting with the way that we're doing it now, so, which I think will help our decision-making.
Council's corner item right there.
Yep. I'll write it. I volunteer to do the next one. Yep.
I'm a with-
Item 10, Town Manager's Report.
Yes, just a quick update of the public safety building, kind of three different areas. Work is progressing quite nicely. The basingery work is the piece that's caught everyone's attention. It's the piece that you see. I noticed today that they actually reached the final meeting, and so the ends in sight may be soon in the end of the week in that regard. But everything continues on schedule. Final finishes are going in, flooring, final paints on the wall, so on and so forth. The sale of the existing building, we have passed our due diligence period, meaning all the environmental reviews and such have been, have been gone through. That's a big milestone for us. That's, many deals get tripped up in that phase, so I'm very pleased to report that. In the meantime, the property continues to be listed. Our broker, it's a common practice for her, and apparently in the commercial area of continuing to list properties, in the event that the deal falls apart, you still have a presence out there in the marketplace. Related to that, we have engaged with the neighborhood in terms of a zone line adjustment. Council may recall that this, this property and a number of other budding properties are actually bisected by a zone line, and that's obviously problematic for anyone looking to redevelop that site. This is something that we've known of for some time town-wide and have systematically kind of cleaned things up. And frankly, because we own the property, it wasn't harming anyone, we simply overlooked this one, and so it's kind of the final remnant. We do expect to reengage with the neighbors and are looking for another meeting on the 20th of this month. And we will have the developer at that meeting, and I think that will go a long way for people to understand who they are, what their plans are. They're still in the formative stages, but just putting the face of the name, I think, will be hugely helpful. The last piece on that front, I'll report, in spite of our best efforts to resolve issues amicably at the building, we are heading toward mediation and arbitration with the architect on some design defect issues. We have a, you know, great comfort and protection through our contract, and are exercising our legal rights to protect our, our interests. So, again, the good news is, the project schedule has not changed, and the work is getting done. But we'll be sorting through responsibility for payment for months to come, I suspect. But it's, it's an unfortunate turn, but it's a necessary position for us to take to protect our interests at this point. This may be a matter for an executive session in the, in the future, should it go further. I still, ever the optimist, hope that something can be resolved through mediation and arbitration. It doesn't require further action. Last point I'll raise, just from housekeeping, we will be looking to do the audit presentation before your next regular meeting on the 19th. I've invited your colleagues on the Board of Education. That is school vacation week, so I don't expect it'll be a full complement of the board. But, but key staff and certainly several board members will be present. So, we do that as a workshop before the meeting. With that, Mr. Chair?
Great. Councilmember comments. I'll start with Mr. Hamel.
I just want to applaud the efforts, the extra efforts that are being taken to share information. I think we're getting some good response to that from the public. I think we've had some people tell us, unsolicited comments, that, that they do believe the current council is working hard to communicate more effectively with the public. So, I just encourage us to continue those efforts, and, you know, we have a number of things we've been doing, workshops and so forth. I think they're, they're paying off. So, I think we should keep on that path.
Counselor Johnson?
I know we're all tired, but I'll tell you, sometimes at the end of the day, I'm sure we've all felt it. You feel beat up, because we're involved in a lot of things, and there's a lot of opinions out there, and they're all welcome and all listened to, but it, sometimes at the end of the day, you feel beat up. So, to come here, really, and hear things like from Chief Moulton about really good things happening in this town, and with the Project Grace speaker, speaker earlier, it just, it kind of level sets everything, because there's a lot of good things that go on in this town. I want to, want to thank everybody that's involved in that, thanks.
Counselor Catarina?
Yes, speaking of Project Grace, again, I've been involved in Project Grace for a number of years, even before being on council. And I hope that people drop by. You don't have to stay for the whole two hours, 10 to noon, at the fire station on the Saturday, but they have, they actually have a drive-through. You drive through, leave a check, and drive off, so.
Would that benefit the cost?
Yeah, there you go. So, please come by. It's, it is important. It makes a huge difference to many people in town, just to have a little bit extra help with fuel costs, because fuel costs, they're expensive. I mean, they are expensive. And then, the other thing is, I just want to thank everybody who's written to us regarding WEX. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from folks, small business people- I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from folks, small business people, just the general public, who are pretty excited about the possibilities. And yes, you know, I've heard some, from some people too, who they think we're giving away money, but we're not. But that's another, that's next week, or two weeks, I guess. I'll talk about that. So anyway, thank you.
Next week is the joint workshop.
Next week is, is school board.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yeah, I would just echo that we've hurt a lot of people on the WEX deal and that, you know, a lot of people are, you know, nervous to speak in front of the town council. And so, you know, there's been a lot of opinions both ways, but I think where some of the major questions are really in is, you know, are we, are we getting the best deal we can for the town? And that's, you know, that's where I'm focused right now is, with everything going on, is this the best deal for the town that we can get, so.
Counselor Hayes?
Thanks, everyone.
So, yeah, I, assuming I can go now, right?
Yes.
I was actually impressed with the turnout tonight, too. Pretty strong show of support for the WEX CEA. You never know, because we get a lot of emails both ways. And I, I was encouraged to see that there was a pretty deep understanding of the impact that this could have and a pretty good showing of support. Pet project that I've been working on, it kind of relates to, it's loosely related to WEX, but you may realize that there's a lot of other communities that are similar to Scarborough and relatively affluent that receive a lot more school funding than we do. And I've been trying to get my arms around understanding that. And I think there's some communities out there that have a strategy. And one of the strategies is to try to direct their growth towards a TIF district, because TIF districts shelter your funds from the state. And I can quote a couple of numbers, like Falmouth, for example, they get 25% of their funding from the state, second richest community in the state. Seven and a half percent of their total value is in a TIF district or TIF districts. Cumberland gets almost half of their funding from the state. They're at 3.8%. Oh, no, sorry, they're at 6.1% of their total equalized state value is in TIF districts. Who else? We've got RSC 5, which is Freeport, they're at almost 5%. Well, Scarborough's at 1.25% of our total value is in TIF districts. So there's opportunity there. And I understand that we haven't targeted that because we're a minimum receiver today, but that doesn't mean that we're going to be a minimum receiver tomorrow. As our enrollment grows up and as our growth happens in TIF districts, there's real, I mean, this is real opportunity and significant dollars for us to understand anyways, to try to leverage the amount of funding that we can get from the state. So that's been my pet project. And I'm not there yet, but it's been interesting to work on.
Yeah, I think, just since WEX is a little bit of a, a topic here, I, we've had a ton of emails. There's lots of people that are concerned about the WEX deal, and I completely respect that. I do, I would like to say, I think, two things. One, the taxpayer is at every single one of our decisions, and we're going to disagree on it. But none of us are up here saying, I want to do this to hurt the taxpayer. We're all acting, whatever we choose, to act in a way that, that's the only people we serve. I would like to say, too, my interactions over email, all over the spectrum, I've been super happy with, I've gone back and forth with many residents, for, against, and in-between, and I've had some really productive dialogue. I've reached out to some people, myself. I just want to compliment that, those interactions. I think it's been really refreshing that we've had those interactions, both in person, over email and over the phone. And they've, they have felt honest and they have felt like everybody's coming from an appropriate place. And that makes me feel good when, as Counselor Johnson pointed out, there's days, there's days, there's, there's very few days as a counselor where, at the end of the day, you're pretty beat up. And we have about 30 of those days, at least 14 of those days ahead of us, 14 of them behind us. But I just wanted to say, it's been nice to have these interactions and, you know, everybody has the taxpayer at heart. And if we can agree on that, then we can disagree on where we end up, so. Okay?
Maybe just one final comment.
No, no, I'm the chair.
No. In the interest of being heard, I have, I have heard from one of our very close followers and listeners that at least three of us were, were not able to be heard very clearly tonight. I don't know whether that's, you're not close enough to the microphone, not a problem for me, or your voice or whatever, but I will speak to those individuals to make sure that we are being heard.
Yep.
Literally.
With that, motion to adjourn? All those in favor?